Town of East Fishkill Planning Board come to order. And I have a roll call.
Michael O'Brien.
John Eichman.
Craig Smith.
Ed Miyoshi.
Richard Campbell.
Who join me for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I thank everybody for coming out tonight. We have a slightly lighter agenda. Our upcoming meetings are on April 2nd and May 19th. We have a set of minutes to review or to approve. Those that were in attendance was Lori, Jason, Michael, John C., John Eichman, and Ed. You had a chance to read the review of the minutes?
I did. I guess we have a quorum, right?
Yes, the four of us.
The four of us, okay.
Jason is en route?
No, Jason's not coming.
Okay, will you accept a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.
One abstention because Richard wasn't here. He was not here for that, so he's got an abstain.
Did you just say you abstain for that?
Abstain.
Okay, so for consideration of conditional approval, we'll first have Phillips Solar Farm.
Good afternoon, all.
Good afternoon.
Those seem like afternoon would it be in so bright out?
Yes.
So I'm Websley with Bergman. And we are, as you guys said, we are seeking conditional approval, conditioned upon getting the approval from the town board this upcoming Thursday.
Just give a quick recap of the project just for those in the audience.
Okay, so basically this project is located along 82. And the lot size is about 182 acres approximately. And it's solar farm that we are generating around 4.98 megawatts of power. And the area that the solar panels cover is about 18 or so acres. And the lot coverage is 10, about 10 percent. There are some federal wetlands on site and the project will not impact those wetlands. And for access to the project, there's a 20-foot wide road that goes from Route 82 all the way to the back of the project, as you can see. And we already went through the DOT process. And we've reconfigured the road, how the entrance is, just to meet their requirements. And we also have enclosed within a fence, an eight-foot tall chain link fence. It's all the panels. And there's also a gate with a knox box for access for the fire department. And that's about it for the site.
Any questions from board members before we move forward with a resolution tonight? No question. Michelle?
So since you were last on the agenda, a group of planning board members and I were out at the site, conducted a site visit and we, the applicant had staked the farm for us that we could see the corners of where the solar panels were going to be located. And we walked most of the site. There were certain areas that we couldn't quite get back into because of the brush and the trees. And also, I just want to note that this application requires a special permit from the town board. So tonight, the project isn't ultimately approved until you receive that special permit. So the best that we can do tonight is a conditional approval, which would, one of the conditions would be for the town board to review and approve that the special permit.
Right, that's exactly what we're hoping to do.
Scott, any comments?
No further comment.
Michael?
I have no further comment either.
Okay, so at this time we'll ask John Eichman to raise up the approval with the, and noting the conditions that have been put on.
Resolution of final site plan approval. Name of site plan Phillips Farm Solar Farm. Name of applicant Phillips Route 82 Solar LLC, perens Amoresco Solar, closed peren. Location Route 82. Resolution offered by planning board member John Eichman. Whereas an application for planning board approval of a site development plan pursuant to Chapter 194 zoning and as per Chapter 100 energy of the Town of East Fishkill Code and for a steep slopes permit for a proposed tier three solar energy system known as the Phillips Solar Farm was submitted by Amoresco as shown on a five-page set of drawings entitled Phillips Farm Solar Farm, prepared by Bergman Engineering dated July 30th, 2019, and last revised February 28th, 2020. And whereas the subject parcel of approximately 183 plus or minus acre parcel is located on 1196 New York State Route 82, East Fishkill, New York, 12533, tax map number 6458-04-918366-0000. And whereas the subject application was deferred to Dutchess County Planning, the Town of East Fishkill Conservation Advisory Council, the Town Engineer, the Fire Advisory Board, and whereas as required by Article 8 of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law, the applicant completed and submitted Part 1 of the full environmental assessment form. And whereas the action is considered to be a type 1 action under SEAKER for which Planning Board declared their intent to be lead agency on January 20th, 2020, and a coordinated review is undertaken. And whereas the environmental impacts of the proposed project were analyzed by the Planning Board, including proposed tree removals, impacts to steep slopes, impacts to wetland buffers, and potential noise and visual impacts. And whereas the Planning Board conducted a site inspection of the proposed parcel during a review of the proposed solar farm. Whereas public hearings were held pursuant to Chapter 194 zoning, Chapter 100 energy of the Town of East Fishkill Code, and pursuant to Chapter 274-A of the New York State Town Law on said application at the East Fishkill Town Hall, 330 Route 376, Hopewell Junction, New York, on January 20th, 2020, and February 18th, 2020. And whereas the public hearing notice for this application was published in the town's official newspaper, the Southern Dutchess News. And whereas the subject public hearing notice was mailed to adjacent and across the street property owners and the subject property was posted with a sign giving notice to the public hearing. And whereas the Planning Board closed the public hearing on February 18th, 2020. And whereas as required by Chapter 100 energy of the Town of East Fishkill Code, the applicant has applied to the town board for a special permit. Now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to Section 617.7 of the SEAKER regulations as stated in this resolution and throughout the course of this application is contained in the minutes of the public hearing and other regular meetings of the Planning Board, the Planning Board considered the impacts which may be reasonably expected to result from the proposed action by comparing them against applicable criteria. And whereas the Planning Board reviewed the proposed environmental impacts and proposed mitigation of those impacts in Parts 2 and 3 of the environmental assessment form and adopted a negative declaration on February 18th, 2020, affirming that there would be no significant adverse environmental impact from the proposed project as shown on the project drawings as conditioned by this resolution as described in Parts 2 and 3 of the environmental assessment form. And therefore no environmental impact statement is required. And further be it resolved that the application of Amoresco for planning board approval of a site development plan pursuant to Chapter 199 zoning for steep slope permit for the construction of a proposed solar energy system known as the Phillips Farm Solar Farm is shown on a five-page set of drawings entitled Phillips Farm Solar Farm Development Project, prepared by Bergman Engineering dated July 30th, 2019, and last revised February 28th, 2020, is approved subject to the conditions listed below. And further be it resolved that the approved site plan with the Planning Board Chairman's signature shall be valid for a period of 12 months from the date of signing. Conditions and modifications. One, obtain special permit from the town board for a tier three solar energy facility pursuant to Chapter 100 energy in the Town of East Fishkill Code. Number two, the applicant shall comply with all conditions of the town board resolution granting the required special permit. Number three, obtain the required signature of the Planning Board Chair on the subject site plan and submit three hard copies of said drawing to the planning office for the Chairman's signature. Number four, submit an ASBIL survey in AutoCAD file in digital format. Number five, the applicant shall establish a $5,000 escrow account to be replenished for an environmental monitor to ensure the phasing plan and erosion control measures are properly implemented. Number six, posting of a steep slope restoration and maintenance bond in the amount of $5,000. Said security to be in effect for a period of not less than two years from the date thereof. Prior to the Chairman signing the site development plan, the bond shall be submitted to and approved by the Town Engineer, which will then be forwarded to the Town Clerk with a copy to the Planning Department. Number seven, approval of the proposed driveway access from New York State Department of Transportation. Number eight, applicant shall provide appropriate landscape screening as approved by the Town Planner and Town Engineer to provide additional screening along Dogwood Lane. Number nine, the applicant is advised that the conditions of this approval must be satisfied and the site plan drawing signed by the Planning Board Chairman and any required permits obtained prior to beginning any related work on the subject property. Number 10, the applicant is advised that final construction improvement drawings shall be submitted addressing all outstanding technical comments as provided by town staff and consultants prior to the Planning Board Chairperson signing the subject site plan. Number 11, the applicant shall submit a decommissioning plan for the property as required by Chapter 100 of the Town Code, including the required funding for the plan to the satisfaction of the Town Legal Department. Number 12, no battery storage should be placed on the site without Planning Board approval.
Any concerns with those conditions?
I have a correction on the first, further be it resolved clause. It refers to the zoning chapters, Chapter 199 and Chapter 194. And then there's a typo that has to be scratched. And I will do that on yours. It's just, it's in the description of the solar farm project.
And I have one further correction too. On condition number six, Town Engineer will be changed to Town Attorney.
I assume that that Croton Avenue solar project is...
Yeah.
That's the scratch, yeah.
Be deleted, yeah.
Those corrections duly noted?
Stephen McDonough at Amoresco. Just so I clearly understand, before we get the permit itself, so obviously the town board has to approve the project on Thursday night. We have to get the signatures from the Chairman. Is it required that we have the bonds in place before we get that signature? So number six? It looks like, okay. Is it just the one bond that needs to be in place?
Both. One's an escrow and one's a bond.
Okay, so both of those have to be in place, okay.
They get signature, yes.
Okay, so everything else is after the fact from the signature then?
No, these are all the conditions to get your signature.
Okay.
Everything's got to be complete to get signature on a site plan.
And for example, you know, it says applicant shall provide appropriate landscape screen as approved by the Town Planner and Town Engineer?
You had mentioned that potentially adding some additional screening along Dogwood Lane.
Yes.
But I think we need to see what it's going to look like when the trees come in. So in that particular case, maybe we...
Well, I think, I think just to be clear, we're referring to the plan. The plan's got to be approved before signature. Then of course you got to go out and do the work, which will also include the screening at that time. And you won't get a certificate of completion until the screening is done to the satisfaction of it.
Okay, so does the screen-in plan need to be in place before getting the signature?
It's part of what's being signed is that plan on paper.
Okay. And same thing with the DOT permit needs to be?
You got to have a DOT before you get signature.
Okay. Thank you.
The signature's the last thing to come.
Let's see lapse time if I got, how long does that take?
For the DOT?
Yeah, for all those, yeah, I mean...
I mean, this could take another 30 to 45 days. That's, that's a concern.
Okay. Duly noted.
I was in the impression it was just related to getting the town board approval on Thursday night. I didn't realize it was going to be all these other conditions.
You got to understand, you know, the town board gives you approval. Obviously that approval is null and void if you don't get a DOT driveway permit.
Oh, absolutely.
So you got to have that permit for the plan get signed.
Yeah, I thought the...
Site plan will be approved, but you won't get it signed until the conditions are met.
Okay.
That was the key distinction I was worried about.
No different than a health department or any other condition.
But, but the fact that this is being passed on, it wasn't, I wanted to make sure that this all didn't have to be done before the town board could take it up.
No. No.
The town board can still vote on Thursday.
Okay.
Further be it resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the Chair or other duly authorized member of the Planning Board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the Town Clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. And that approval of said site development plan shall be valid for a period of 12 months from the date of this resolution to satisfy all conditions of approval and to obtain the signature of the Planning Board Chairman on the site development plan.
Can I get a motion to accept this resolution?
Second.
Can I get it moved and...
I think there was just one item, if I heard correctly, earlier in the day. I think there was discussion about clearing trees before the deadline. So the board may want to wait, you know, consider allowing the applicant just to cut trees so they don't meet that deadline for the tree removal.
There's an Indiana bat. Yes, that's who we're referring to. There's an Indiana bat deadline. The Indiana bat, the trees need to be cleared before March 31st. And so the applicant is hoping to have some of the trees clear so that they are not, when they are ready to construct, they'll be down and...
Can we put that as number 13?
And that would only be cutting of the trees, not stumping and all that other stuff.
Yeah.
Just the cutting of the trees, which is not all that uncommon.
So I would amend the motion to that effect.
I amend the second.
That is, of course, if the applicant wants to cut trees.
Okay, so with that, we have a vote. Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi?
Aye.
John Eichman?
Aye.
And Richard Campbell?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion pass. Resolution pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kuchersky, minor modification to the site plan. 129 Clove Branch Road.
Yes, I own the building on Clove Branch and 82. Upstairs, I rent to the state police and to a dentist. Downstairs, I have 2,000 square feet of rental space. The footprint downstairs is 8,000 square feet. And I'm requesting permission to rent only 1,000 square feet for storage. There is an abundance of physicians and dentists who have no room to store charts. So I'd like to have permission to just take 1,000 square feet and use it for storage.
Okay, any questions, planning board members?
No, I...
No.
I think it's...
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, pretty straightforward.
Michael?
No comment.
No, I'm...
Michelle, any?
So yes, so this, just to be clear, he, there's, I guess it was a couple of years back now, we approved 2,000 square feet downstairs for, I think it was mainly professional office. He's asking for 1,000 additional square feet for storage space only. And that would be 3,000 square feet out of the 8,000 that would be rented out. And per our code, the storage space only needs about one parking space. And he's got 65 spaces out there, plenty of parking. And probably that one parking space would be filled only, would be filled rarely because the person assumably would not be there all the time. They would just come take the stuff out of storage and leave. So I'm confident that there's enough parking on the site.
And large trucks should be able to maneuver in that site? I don't think that's an issue. Because you have room in the back for them to do a turnaround.
Plenty of room, yes.
Right. Okay. Can I have a motion to accept this minor modification to the site plan?
There's a resolution prepared.
Yes, there is.
John, you offer up the modification?
I think everybody will be relieved to know that this is a much simpler resolution. Resolution for a minor modification to a site plan. Name of site plan, minor modification for 129 Clove Branch Road. Name of applicant, Stanley Kuchersky. Location, 129 Clove Branch Road. Grid 6458-04-663142. Resolution offered by Planning Board member John Eichman. Whereas the applicant submitted an application and plans to the Planning Board on February 19th, 2020 to convert 1,000 square feet of storage space in the lower level of the building for rent storage space. Whereas the lower level consists of 8,000 square feet, of which 2,000 square feet of the lower level was previously approved as office rental space. And the remaining 6,000 square feet is currently used as storage. And whereas the parking requirement for the proposed for-rent storage space is one space. And where there are currently 65 parking spaces on the site and sufficient parking exists to accommodate the 1,000 square feet of for-rent storage space. And whereas the applicant is requesting amended site plan approval for an additional 1,000 square feet for for-rent storage space. And whereas the Planning Board further finds that the application meets the town requirements for a minor amendment to the site plan, now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby issues amended site plan approval to convert a maximum of 1,000 square feet of the existing lower level storage space to rentable storage space, subject to the conditions set forth below. The proposed storage space shall be used for storage only. Shall not be used for offices or any other commercial or medical uses without further approval from the Planning Board. Number two, the applicant shall obtain all necessary building permits and a certificate of occupancy prior to renting the storage space. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the Chair or other duly authorized member of the Planning Board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the Town Clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Have a motion to accept this resolution?
Second.
Can move them properly, second. Votes. Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
John Eichman?
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi?
Aye.
Richard Campbell?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion pass. Resolution pass.
That's it?
Great.
Thank you.
Next, next item is Global Foundries Site Plan. Really need to use a microphone.
Is there, there was, there was a hand mic. There we go.
He's bringing a hand mic. Folks on TV can't hear you otherwise.
Got you, okay. So I'm Mick O'Callahan. I'm the project manager at Global Foundries at 2070 Route 52. We're here today, thank you first of all for getting us on the agenda. I know it was a little bit short notice. Basically, we're here today to look for an addition to an existing semiconductor building on the campus. It's known as B320B. It's located on Plot 5 on the Global Foundries site. If I jump the next sheet. So the location of the building itself is here, 320B. It's kind of centered, not north of center on the site. So that's, that's the location on the overall site plan, okay?
And where is 52?
Yeah, 52.
Across the top, I think, there.
Route 52 is across the top.
Yes, it is, yeah. Route 52 is across the top here.
Yeah.
Okay. So an isometric view, just to show you what we're planning to do here. This is the existing 320B building. So what you're seeing here is this bump out on the top of the building. This is what is new penthouse space or equipment platform space. So basically, this is existing manufacturing areas on Level 1. We have previously vacant space for manufacturing over here on the west side and directly below this building that we're supposed to add to the top of the building. The reason we want to put this addition on there is to support the manufacturing space below. So what we have is we have HVAC systems, abatement systems, and process water systems. So this area here is required to support the new manufacturing space below. It's slightly higher than the existing building. It's about 10 feet higher. And that's because we've got some equipment that's pretty tall in there. So that's, that's the reason for the increased height. And we're also protruding out slightly out across the front of the existing building. So the reason for that is we want to avoid adding mass to the existing structure. So we want to install an independent structure.
Is this tied to like a new technology that's coming in?
Yes, so we're ramping up with new tools for the facility. So I mean, manufacturing in this building right now is pretty, you know, it's low production. But that's going to ramp right up with a new tool set.
So it's for new product line?
Correct, yes, yeah. It's a pretty, you know, as in the semiconductor business, you know, it's pretty tight schedule. You know, we react to market requirements. So basically, we get a tool list and we got to, you know, adapt our processes to meet that tool list. Okay. And so as I was saying, this is going to be an independent structure of the existing structure so as not to add mass to the existing structure. So what we're going to do is we're going to drop columns down through the existing building to new foundations below the existing concrete slab level. So what you see here is a new structure. Other, just notes here, this little area at the front is an existing covered canopy for moving tools in and out. We're going to upgrade that canopy. We're just going to enclose it and add some air conditioning, heating into that space just to make conditions better for moving the new tools into the building. We also have an exterior generator. So we've arbitrarily shown it here. It might move around a little bit from that location. We're figuring out what the best spot is for that. So any questions on that one?
So is, what is going to be beneath that? Is that going to be a clean room or...
It is, yeah. So it's going to, so it previously was a clean room. It was manufacturing space before, way back in the past. It's vacant now. And we want to bring it back to its former manufacturing space. In order to do that, we have to add the new equipment platform above. This area on top was previously added in the 90s. Originally, it was a single structure building with four penthouses on top of the building. And that was back in the 60s when this building was originally built. And then in the 90s, this entire penthouse equipment platform was added. But they didn't, for some reason, they didn't add this corner here. And now we're adding it to, you know, to basic support the clean room space below.
And so the structure is just going to increase by 10 feet in that?
Exactly, just for that, for that cube that you see there. It's 10 feet higher than the, I've got a front elevation here that we can take a quick look at. What's it going to look like? So again, you can see, you know, it's, that's about 10 feet higher than the existing parapet level. This area to the right, that's actually open and open right now. It's a single story at the moment. We're just going to cover that over. So basically, there's existing clean room space below that. We didn't want to, you know, impede manufacturing in that area by, you know, by intrusive structural work. So when this, when this new equipment platform is built, we're just going to enclose that area. It's to avoid snowdrift and that type of thing on the roof. And it won't be load bearing. It'll just be running, you know, light utilities through it, piping, you know, ductwork, that type of thing. So it'll just, it'll match pretty much what's there already in terms of roof height.
So just for clarity, the floor to ceiling of the new space, is that 10 feet or that's greater?
No, it's greater, it's 10 feet higher than the existing.
Okay, so from new floor to new roof line is approximately?
Approximately, it's going to be just a little over 50 feet.
And currently, that space is being utilized, so you'll do... And currently, that space is being utilized so you'll do construction while it's being operational?
There's nothing operational below here yet.
Below it.
It's vacant. So now we have a chance to get in there and get the structure in for the support of this addition on top. So it'll, you know, it's, it's all part of an overall schedule. They are moving tools in there and, and the intent is to get this in, get it installed, get the support equipment in, ready for that tool set to, to be installed in the space down below.
And will it increase workforce that you have?
Yes.
From your current workforce?
So there's 100 plus additional manufacturing staff in this building alone.
What are the hours, is this going to be a 24 hour?
It's, it's a 24 operation, yes, yeah.
I'd have to put you on the spot, but what was the schedule the corporate asked you to hit? When are we supposed to be shipping, shipping products?
In this business, we're always late, but you know, it's a, and it, it's, it's a graded approach. So basically, with the abatement units that we're putting in this building above are for a tool set that is in the first quarter of 2021. And that's, that's, that's when the, that's when the tool is on. And we've got to back off that because they have a qualification period. So they got a month to, you know, before that or maybe two to qualify the product. So we, we need to be ready, you know, well in advance of that. So we're, we're right up against it, unfortunately.
Any additional questions? Board members? Just turning, Michelle?
Sure. So I just want to, so you're actually looking at not only are you going to get the mechanical space on top, but you're also looking at the change of use because the building has been vacant for quite some time. So ultimately, whenever there's a vacant building and the new application comes in, we also consider that for, for site plan because we know that, that this particular project is going to induce growth in the building and result in additional employees. So I'm just making you aware of that because that's, that is also part of the application, even though typically you would just go and get building permits to, to renovate the space. But we should be looking at it holistically. So that means we also need to look at the parking. And I didn't ask you when you submitted the application, where is this parking going to be for this particular building? Is it?
So, so right now, there's, there's parking directly in front of the building and also the previous building, 322, that was demolished, that's being turned into parking.
Okay, so this is going to be?
It's actually, the project is about to kick off for that. So it'll be there well in advance.
Do you have a plan as part of this that shows that or?
Um, I'm not sure what I have here. Second, maybe not. Oh yeah, you can see it here. So 32, well, it's in this area right here.
And the 80 to 100 jobs, are they going to be all there at once? Are they going to be there in shifts?
Over shifts.
They're going to be shifts, okay.
100 at a time or?
It'll be spread over 24 hours. So likely it'll be two 12-hour shifts. That'll be spread over.
50 on a shift essentially.
The other, the other point about the parking too. We demolished a building, building 322. So all of that parking lot was there for 322 in addition to where the building footprint is. Scott, you've reviewed the site and we're going to be finishing that parking lot sometime during the summer.
So did you clarify? Because I think you were wondering if it was going to be 50 and 50 on each shift or 100 at each shift?
50 on each shift.
That's 50 additional staff, yeah.
Per shift.
Per shift.
And then the other thing I just want to note, and I haven't had a chance, this, this application came in a little bit late, so I haven't had a full chance to review it. But I just wanted to note that currently in the Iowa District, the height is 30 feet, I believe. And so this building is taller, but there are many buildings that are taller on the site. So I need to just understand how it's going to meet zoning and what steps may need to happen to make it, to get it approved.
And then just one other thing, you, you speak of two shifts. So I don't know that that parking lot plan that we previously reviewed and approved had lighting on it or not. Did it?
It does, it does have lighting. There's lighting right there.
So there's new lighting being installed in there?
There's new lighting that we've already installed in the section south of building 321 that services IBM and Global Foundries. And then there'll be more going in.
All right, so that can all be put on a plan so we can?
It's on, I believe it's on the?
Operated in this application.
I believe it's on the plan that is submitted for the parking lot.
But you can just take that sheet and attach it to this?
Yeah, we can. We can do, we can do an overall layout and, and show that for sure, yeah.
And as far as the existing utilities of the building, as far as, you know, bathrooms and stuff like that, they're able to accommodate that workforce inside that space now as it sits or?
Correct. I mean, the, the original bathrooms were for the original overall, I mean, west of, west of side of the building was also manufacturing. So the, the bathrooms that are there currently would have been for the entire building. So, you know, yes, they are capable of.
What, previously it was roughly the same number of employees?
I don't know.
There was more, 20 years, 20 years ago, there was a lot more employees. Probably three to four times as much as what we're planning to put in there right now.
Got it.
60% of that building has been vacant for the last 20 years.
Wow. Wow.
So, so given that, I'm, I think the professionals have not had opportunity to review this application. Is that correct, Michelle?
I haven't had a chance to review it yet, no.
And what about traffic? Because this is going to add additional, um, traffic flow.
It's, it's unclear yet whether or not any sort of traffic vehicle trip numbers will be required. We're sort of working that out right now. But we'll let you know if we need any sort of information about that.
I know DOT has expressed some concern about the renewed, you know, activity at the site. And I think we're meeting with them in a week or two to address that. So we'll see how that plays out.
Are, are they going to be in attendance to that DOT meeting or they should?
I'm sorry?
Should they be in attendance?
No, that'll be an internal meeting is my understanding.
If you had to wait another month for our next meeting, what did, is that going to be livable from your schedule?
Unfortunately, that would impact our schedule. Have to push out by a month, which would be detrimental.
Is there any way we could delegate our authority to Scott? I mean, I, I realize the professionals have not had ample, ample opportunity. Thinking mainly from my own capabilities, I'm not sure I have a lot of value add beyond what Scott.
You know, I, I think we, we should do our proper due diligence as well. That's, that's where I'm, that's where I'm.
I'm uncomfortable moving forward until the professionals have had a chance to review it. I'm sorry.
I mean, and the plans are still with our structural review engineer. So I mean, they're still being reviewed as well. So I don't know if you need any interim, if there's an interim step that you need to take, demolition or anything to help so you don't, so you don't lose that time, you know? Obviously, there's no tree clearing on this one, but?
No.
If there's any, if there's any interim step that you can think of, we could consider that to kind of keep you moving, sure.
I mean, what we could do is if we could move forward with demolition, you know, on the, in the space below the proposed addition, you know, with demolition of the floor, getting foundations in, that would be a big help to us, that, you know?
I think that's doable.
Yeah.
Agree, Scott?
Yeah.
We, we've also offered the opportunity to meet, you know, in the, in the interim, have a special meeting because we used to meet twice a month. If that, you know, would severely assist your schedule.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be fantastic if we could do that.
By the way, I wasn't saying we shouldn't do DOD, I was just saying.
Understood. I, I, that's a way that once the professionals have opportunity to look, how, how much time are they going to need?
So I think what Scott was saying is that we hired an outside engineer to look at the structural because it's a, it's a different kind of thing. So that, that review hasn't even, or is just occurring now. We don't even have?
It's been initiated, yeah. It, it's commenced.
So we don't have any of that information?
I don't have a timeframe for that. There's been no, you know, comment letter yet.
Because our next meeting is not till April 21st, so. I mean, I'd be a mean?
How much demolition do you have, Bob?
It's, it's?
What did you say? Couple of weeks?
In timeframe, we, we probably have about, you know, certainly three weeks, two, three weeks of demolition. You know, it's removal of a floor slab and excavation effectively. That's, that's really what the time duration would be.
So if you pick up the phone tomorrow, demolition crew starts when?
Demolition would start in a week's time.
In a week, so there's a month already by the time they get that done, so. They got to submit your insurances and all that stuff to get that permit. So maybe, you know, maybe you get that permit Monday, you know? So I think it'll work out.
All right.
Been working, they're moving ahead, so.
So do we need a? If we do that by motion, Michael? For, for allowing them to proceed with demolition?
Yes.
They'd still have, they'd have to fill out a demolition permit.
Yes, they'd still have to come in and get a permit, yes.
And Scott, we're still proceeding on the parallel path there with the, the structural engineer to?
Yeah. So I would move that we permit them to do demolition and foundation work?
That'd be fantastic.
Subject to getting a demolition permit?
Second?
Yep.
And if you, and if you could just provide me with some sort of site plan to show basically where the parking is going to be so I know? Because we have to keep track of all the parking on the site. Just so I, I allot the spaces on that to, to this particular use.
We can do that, yeah.
Is moved improperly second. How do you vote?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I Park, any updates from, Michelle, anything from I Park?
Um, I think, did you guys want to say, give us any updates? Or you want me to, you want to talk about it? That'd be great.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you. See you soon.
I'm going to hand out.
Good. Thank you, Scott. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We'll look on.
Thank you.
Well, slightly different angle, okay.
Thank you.
Do you have a copy of?
Just move them around.
I'm Kimberly Ryan, architect with the Schumacormic Van Voris, presenting a project to you that I Park is excited about to introduce a visitor center and a food hub. The visitor center is approximately a 2,000 square foot addition that we're putting on the southeast corner. And it would give an opportunity for visitors that come to the site that will have some historical information about farming in the area, some agriculture. We also are going to introduce inside the building some kiosks for different types of food vendors. There's a description on the paperwork that I gave you there. Also in talks with the culinary to do a restaurant café with exhibition for the cooking. They're also talking with several other tenants for the building that's separate from the visitor center but cohesive with it. That would include a bakery that does mass production of sweet baked goods. Also, there was talks with a, I guess, a brewery, brew pub?
Right, right. Another brew pub coming in. Beer business and perhaps a bar. The bakery is Sprout Creek and we're going to be bringing plants and working on them right now.
Yep.
And it's Jimmy the Baker, as you've seen on TV. So they're also going to do, they're, they're going to do bread there as well. But it's going to be a showpiece where you can actually watch the baking happen. So that's, that's the conceptual.
Is, is this new construction or?
So what you see that's new are the sloped roofs. So what we're just trying to do is give the building a slightly different feel facade, have some outdoor eating area, handicap ramp accessibility, which it does not have right now. The visitor center that we'll be adding on the corner will be on grade entrance and will be adding internally an elevator that will stop from grade to that three to four foot first floor height. And wherever it may go in the future, we're not really sure yet as we continue to plan and evolve. So basically, what you see is the addition is the glass visitor center on the corner and the porch that goes off towards Jane Bakes. And that's going to provide outdoor seating for anyone who decides to purchase any of the food on the inside. Would have nice outdoor seasonal, kind of like break away from campus and go grab some lunch and have a nice place to enjoy the outdoors, which this campus is lacking right now.
And is the concept similar to like the Taste in New York where you have a sign on the highway that would lead you into this area as like a, as a visitor center slash like, for lack of a better term, rest stop where you could actually buy and purchase food?
Exactly, exactly. So we'll, we'll showcase all the I Park tenants and all the food manufacturing and whatnot would be showcased in there too. Ronnie Brook Farms is coming. They're going to be doing the ice cream and that stuff. So we're almost naming it after them, right? It's the, they're welcoming center and it's an education center too.
How many square feet?
It's only about 2,000.
What we're adding is 2,000 interior and 2,000 exterior. All of the other tenancies will be inside the existing building.
So there's an existing building that was a manufacturing building that they're going to infill with a bunch of different, the brewery, the Ronnie Brook Farms, Jane's Baked is there now. And they're going to add a café. And then the gym, is gym still going to? There's going to be a gym going in as well. And then this structure that they're adding is going to sort of be the front facade and a, almost like a lobby plaza area where people can walk in and then see, and then go to the different uses that are in that building.
And how many existing square feet are we talking about?
It's a big building.
Do you have that number? The building's about, well, 210.
Okay.
Including the link, 210.
What's your target timeframe for this?
I'd love to get it going, assuming possible. Everybody's hot for it, so we want to get it going.
So this is another one where we suspect DOT is going to, we suspect DOT is going to want to weigh in because DOT, this is going to be an exit off of the highway to come into this site. And obviously, they're going to want to look at how that works, just like they would with a regular rest stop. And so we suspect that this is something they might have some comments on when we bring it to them.
Do you expect to put some site, to draw people to the site on, off of?
We, we currently have the monuments and that's, I think that's pretty much all we're allowed at this point, right?
On the campus, but yeah, I don't know what you're going to, if you're going to try to have?
I think, but they're referring to like on 84, like, or?
We don't really have great visibility on 84, believe it or not. It's really the ramp that actually takes you away from I Park. So we'll look at where we meet the west campus. And if we can get something there that we feel can be visible and not obnoxious, we'd certainly love to do something like that. Also on Route 52, perhaps something out there and on I Park Boulevard as well.
So, traffic?
I was, I was assuming that this was, you'd get to this by coming in near, coming in from 84 and?
That's the best route in. But you could get there from 52 on the Ring Road too.
And all of that infrastructure is already in place from when?
Right.
There used to be thousands of people working there every day.
That's the whole thing, right? You know, 22,000 people a day came in and out of that place when you count the contractors and the subs and everything else.
The issue is, the, the issue is that although there were all those people there and there is the infrastructure, there used to be, South Road used to be open, many of the roads on the campus. So there were alternate ways to get around.
There were other intersections that were open.
And then there were traffic lights that were working that aren't working now. So what DOT is probably wants to do is take a look at the, the site and the area. And, and also there's additional development that has occurred along the corridor that has impacted, you know, I, I don't believe by any means that we're over capacity, but they may want to play with, with some of the traffic lights or?
Right. Or demonstrate what those thresholds will be in the future to initiate, you know, the reopening of those intersections.
They just want to know what's going on, you know, so they understand what they have to plan for. And then, you know, whether or not like they may, if it, if it ends up being some sort of visitor center, they may want to put a sign on 84 that directs people from 84 to the visitor center.
Because that would be a, a major draw there. I would have to? Because that would be a major draw there, I would have to think, off the highway.
That's the game changer for the campus, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you have an estimate of how many people you expect will be visiting in a year?
We don't have any info on that yet. We really haven't thrown anything like that together yet. I know that, you know, if you look at Sloop, they're drawing, you know, probably 250 to 300 visitors on any given Saturday and something like that.
Got it. I think this is great because it is so cubic as you go through there. I mean, it's just, you know, it's tough to differentiate, yeah. 1970 Soviet block, yes.
Chernobyl. Yeah, so this is a wonderful architect here, really softening up the campus at this point, right? Trying to get that light back in it because it does feel dead in a lot of spots on the campus the way it looks right now.
Were you expecting any kind of action from the board tonight, or is this informational for the board?
We're just sharing the info on that. We're also going to be coming in with a permit now that we have the DC straightened out with Jane Bakes, so she can open up the café part of her, her business, and not just have the manufacturing, she'll have a little coffee shop on campus as well.
So, I mean, and what he'll have to do is I'll have to submit, I think what should happen is probably that you'll submit a planning board application for all of the uses that are in this building, including the new addition, and then we'll just, the planning board would look at it collectively.
You're right.
I know Jane's Bake was, is already, you've already received a planning board approval and a building permit for that. So Jane's Bakes is actually in for the manufacturing piece of it, but they want to add a café to the space that they already are manufacturing in. So they're going to, that will be part of this application, but the manufacturing piece is already there.
And also noted that the area that we're adding on is all asphalt right now, so we're not taking any of the green space away from an area where we're building on what is currently asphalt. So we're not going to be increasing any impervious areas of the campus, so just wanted to reiterate that.
I think you said you're removing about 12 spaces, right? Parking spaces?
Actually, the initial study I took a look at, we're only impacting three, because I can add spaces where there aren't any. And then we're also looking at another location alongside Jane Bakes where we might be able to grab a few more. So I don't think we'll be in a negative by any more than three.
Okay, perfect.
Looks nice, really does.
That's for work.
We're trying to get away from the rectangles.
Thanks very much, everybody. Have a great evening. Thanks.
Any, any other items, comments? Okay, board members, all? Parts of minds clear, all right. Have motion to close the meeting?
So moved, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Be adjourned.
Here we go.